We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting today, Tuesday, December 17th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for an invocation from Elder Lester of the New Disciples Worship Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag led by Commissioner Ty Pinserga.
Will everyone please bow your head? Heavenly Father, we come boldly before your throne of grace tonight. We come, oh God, to say thank you for this great commission meeting. Father, we thank you for your wisdom. We thank you for your knowledge. We thank you that you give understanding even unto each official tonight. We thank you that as the business of the City of Boynton Beach come up before you today, we ask that your perfect divine will be done. We thank you, Father, for every contract that is being looked at. We thank you for every official business that's been done for this great city. We do thank you and we praise you that your will will be done. We thank you, Lord God, that you said to trust in the Lord with all our heart, to lead not to our own understanding, but in all of our ways acknowledge you. And as we acknowledge you this night, we thank you, Lord God, for a successful meeting. We thank you, Father God, that we will work together, that every commissioner, every mayor, every city manager, every official, oh God, we thank you that they will allow your perfect will to be done. And we thank you for the employees of the City of Boynton Beach. We thank you for every police officer. We thank you for every firefighter. We thank you for every paramedic that keeps this city safe. And we do bless you. We do praise you and we reverence you, for we pray these things and ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus. And we thank you, Father, that you be glorified in this great city of Boynton Beach and in its heritage, that you will continue to let it live on. In Jesus' name we pray and we say amen and amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant?
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz is absent. Commissioner McCray?
Here.
Commissioner Romulus?
Present.
Commissioner Pinserga?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
All right. I have received a request to delete item 6F off the agenda. Is there any other additions, deletions, or corrections?
Hold on, hold on.
And also, I'd like to add another announcement for 3D regarding a menorah lighting-
You're going too fast, slow down. Is there any reason why this has been deleted?
Yes, sir. We need to amend the agenda item. This is a PO that's to change order for roof repairs at one of our utility buildings, and they've since dug further and have found more extensive damage, so we want to modify the request for next meeting.
Thank you. We need explanations, thank you.
In addition, I'd like to add an announcement for 3D regarding the menorah lighting at the Boynton Beach Mall. May I have a motion to approve as amended?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner McCray, would you like to begin?
Not really, but I'll go ahead. First of all, I'd like to say to the city manager, the clerks, Shana, who's filling in for our attorney to the mayor, absence of our vice mayor, the elected officials up here, I'd like to say to all department heads, all citizens of Boynton, I'd just like to wish you all a happy holiday in whichever way you celebrate it, and that hopefully that you will have a healthy and prosperous new year. And at our next commission meeting, I will be at the big 7-0, I will have a birthday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry, let me finish. I'd just like to announce the passing of my brother, Frank Edward McCray. His service is gonna be, viewing would be five to eight this coming Friday at the Community Deliverance Church here in Boynton. That address is 202 Northwest 9th Court. Services will follow Saturday afternoon at 1:30 with Barrio and Palm Beach Memorial Park. Okay, if everybody want to know how my family and I were getting along, we're doing fine. For God said in his holy writ, he said, "To be absent from the body is to be present with the Lord." I'm wearing this tie tonight. This will be the last time I will wear this tie. I will take it off, and Thursday afternoon, I will place this around my brother's neck, just to tell him thank you for letting me be his big brother. Thank you. I'm through.
Thank you. Commissioner Romulus?
I have to follow that.
Yes.
I really have nothing to disclose in terms of disclosures, but I do just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and all the other holidays in between, that this has been a great holiday season for myself and my family, and I'm just thrilled to again be in this position to serve the community of Boynton Beach, and I'm wishing everyone a happy holiday festive season and spending time with their family. Enjoy that process as well. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Pinserga?
Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, I want to send my condolences to you, Commissioner. It is never easy losing a loved one, and my heart aches for you and your family. And of course, I wish you all Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays in general and a Happy New Year. I look forward to an interesting 2020. Many things are happening, and more on that, but that's it for me, no disclosures.
All right, thank you. On December 4th, I attended a Mayor's Roundtable in Bell Harbor, talking about hate crimes and antisemitism, and was able to receive standard operating procedures and work with the Anti-Defamation League to get information to our police chief. I attended the Florida Department of Transportation's new information regarding a construction along the interchange heading eastbound on gateway to southbound on 95. They're going to add in another, a second right-hand turn lane to go southbound so that more people can go south in the morning. On the December 5th, I attended Business Over Coffee, and I want to thank David Scott and John Durgan for holding a great event. It's just nice that, you know, people who have questions and don't know how to reach the city about how to run a business, we are having that transparency and open lines of communications. That afternoon, I met, had a meeting with Peace regarding their community IDs. On December 6th, I attended the farm tour over in the Glades area that was hosted by the Florida Sugars Grow League, and it was very interesting to see the Florida crystals, and hopefully I can create a new partnership with our high school and their BASA program because they need drone operators on the fields, and they got plenty of land to fly drones. That afternoon, it was the League of Cities Tri-City Barbecue. That was very well attended. You know, I'll invite the commission again next year to take the farm tour. It was an amazing time to learn about the western half of Palm Beach County. On December 7th, I attended the Pearl Harbor ceremony at the City Boynton Beach Parade, where Eleanor will tell us a little bit more, and light up the park that evening. On the 9th, I attended the INCA Holiday Party. On the 10th, I attended the SCORE Luncheon, and it seems that Boynton Beach has overlapped with the two SCORE memberships in Palm Beach County, the Southern and the West Palm Beach. So if we could speak to that and get them both here, that'd be great. On December 11th, I did the Public Works Holiday Luncheon, and I was just amazed to see the work that Andrew Mack and his team did at Public Works Commission. If you, you know, it used to be called a dumpster graveyard, and now it's actually a Public Works facility, and it's just amazing to see what they did to that building where our fire department used to train. It was just full of asbestos mold and mildew, and they've actually made it livable and workable. They put in an amazing pavilion, and so I'm excited to see all the great work that the Public Works can do. That evening, I attended the Boynton Beach Fire Department's Holiday Party. On December 12th, I attended the Transportation Planning Agency's meeting and approved a long-range transportation plan as required by the federal government to certify our Metropolitan Planning Organization. I attended a Finnish-American Chamber of Commerce, and I spoke with one of their representatives about having a Midsummer's event next June, hopefully with our sister cities, so I'll try to get that and coordinate it with them. I attended a meeting with the Palm Trans Service Board and also went to the Gold Coast Band's Holiday Concert. On the 13th, I was a judge at the Boat Parade, and I have spoken with Ted Hoskinson regarding his item on the agenda. Is there any other informational items or disclosures?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, in regards to calling it a dumpster graveyard, it was called Roland Green because it's in District 2, and I did get a chance to go over there to make sure that they was doing what they supposed to have done. Commissioner Pinserga, I'd like to say to you, you know, no offense, sir, but I did not lose a loved one. He's present with the Lord. When my brother passed, I was one of the embalmers that handled the services for my brother, sir, so I'm real good. I haven't lost anything. He's right down there in the Mylton Curtis Funeral Home. I tell him goodnight every night I'm down there, until this comes in, sir, and I'll be telling him goodbye. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Pinserga?
Mayor, I'd just like to commend staff for the Holiday Parade, and if any CRA staff are here, I want to commend them as well for the Boat Parade. I've been to many parades, but it was my first parade where I was actually part of it, and I got to sit on a convertible and wave to people, so it was a unique and fun experience, and I brought some friends over, and it was something that I will cherish with me, my first parade in a car. Thank you to staff for putting that together, because I know that that kind of an event at that scale is very difficult to manage and organize, so, so thank you.
Mayor, since we're giving kudos to staff for the parade, thank you. I made comments to staff in regards to, I told Lori that I will meet with her in regards to things that I did not, I was not happy with at the parade. I said I would address it tonight, but, you know, being a commissioner and being the big person that I am, I met with her one-on-one and explained the situation, problems that I saw from the parade. I want to say to staff, the parade was great, but having been in as more parades than any of you sitting up here, I don't know what we're going to have to do to get people to come out to participate in the parade. I waved less this year than I waved ever before. I don't know what the problem was, but we need to resurrect the Holiday Parade here in this city, perhaps because of the construction, I don't know, but there's a lot of work that we must get done and get everybody else involved. I'm just saying, this is a city-wide parade, not just a group of people. I'm just saying, it's nice for the participants, but it's nice to see the citizens on the sideline waving and yelling back at you. I'm just saying, I didn't enjoy it this year because three people waved at me and yelled at me, maybe I'm not doing a good job, but I was happy anyway. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further, yes, Commissioner Romulus?
I want to also thank staff for the work that they've done during those two parades, and just a quick report back from my six-year-old and my three-year-old in regards to the parade, they definitely like Boynton's better. We also attended the Del Rey Parade, and they felt like the Boynton Parade was way more lit, so they enjoyed it, and I just wanted to report that back, so good job to our, our marketing staff for the work that they did on the parade. My six-year-old, my three-year-old approve.
All right, thank you. All right. Seeing no more informational items, moving on to announcements, community special events and presentations. Quarterly update by Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager, about the city census marketing efforts over the past quarter.
Good evening. Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager for the city. We are just 105 days away from Census Day, which is April 1st, 2020, and the city's team has been hard at work to prepare. At the last quarterly census update I provided, Commissioner Romulus had asked for a response rate goal. At a recent census meeting, the team decided that the goal would be 72%, which is what Boynton Beach achieved for both the 2000 and 2010 census, and similar to neighboring municipalities. I will now walk you through the update. I'm sure you saw these marketing collateral at the last update, but I just wanted to provide an update. We are continuing to distribute these postcards, which are two-sided and in multi-language as well as posters throughout the community. We've added community standards as passing these out on their visits, as well as building inspectors, and we've given them to the fire department for car seat installations, just to make sure everyone is receiving these postcards. Both of these marketing collateral direct users to the website, which is in two languages. We continue to update our dedicated webpage, which is boynton-beach.org/census. So far since the inception of these pages, which include a general census page and FAQ pages, we have a total of 1,000-page views. As you can see, we have accordions which have FAQs, and we keep adding them as the census provides updated information, including videos. The city has two computer labs, one at the Senior Center and one at the City Library. At the City Library, there's a folder with census materials, and on the Senior Center computers, we have backdrops for the census logo. Over the past quarter, we've done multiple events, including with National GIS Day. Our GIS senior analyst Jen went to do two different, or different school cross-point to inform the students about GIS Day with a census theme. She also participated in an after, one of our after-school programs, teaching teenagers about the importance of the census. Our US Census rep Sandy was present as well. We also did a Facebook Live and encouraged the community to send in questions in advance, and we answered them live about the census, as well as giving out flyers at a recent tree giveaway. We created bookmarks that we brought with us to read for the record. We distributed 3,000. We also have available extras at the City Library and are giving them out on a daily basis. We continue to put an ad in the Fun Fair Magazine again. In the spring, 12,000 issues will be printed, as well as the Senior Center newsletter, we have an ad in there as well. The distribution is 2,000. Here's a couple sample social media posts. Over the last quarter, we've done 28 placements, and we plan to increase the social media on all of our outlets in the next 100-and-so days. You have samples of these, but we produced magnets recently that are on city vehicles, and if you were at the Holiday Parade, you might have seen the census magnet on the truck carrying Santa. These are in production. These are license plate frame holders, which will go around the license plates of the police vehicles, as well as other city vehicles. Recently, we changed the marquee outside the library on Federal Highway, both directions, putting the census messaging up there as well. We produce a tri-fold brochure, which we have available now, and it will be included in 24,000 envelopes, which are mailed to all the utility customers in March. It includes a timeline of what to expect and more information about the census. On November 22nd, I presented to the Palm Beach County City Management Association members about the city census outreach efforts over the past, since April 1st, when we started.
Laura, go back, go back two slides, please.
Sure.
These brochures, our utility customers are not only within ZLM, so they're going to everyone?
Everyone who receives a utility bill.
Okay, thank you.
Most recently, on November 29th, the Palm Beach Post included an article about our Boynton Beach Census Blitz is underway, and included a lot of the information that I Going forward, we are going to continue to engage our Complete Count Committee. We have an upcoming meeting in January. We are going to focus on the hard-to-count areas that we've already identified with door hangers and continued distribution of our flyers and posters. We will be doing some billboards along I-95, as well as employing our web banners, which are pop-ups on certain areas of the website. We will be doing training for staff in the City Library, as well as the Senior Center, to teach staff how to assist the community when they come in to respond to the census on the city's computers. I'm going to introduce John Durgan, who is an economic specialist, and he's going to talk about some upcoming events that we have to help promote the census. He's been an integral member of the team.
Good evening, John Durgan, Economic Development Specialist. Just want to quickly run through some of the upcoming events we do have for the census. The first one is going to be the second week in January. We're going to actually host a Census Job Fair. We partner with Pathways to Prosperity, as well as Healthier Boynton Beach. The census has told Palm Beach County they have to hire around 5,000 temporary workers, so a lot of those are going to be coming from Boynton Beach, so we thought it'd be a good idea to hold a job fair. And the job fair's going to entail having around six or seven computers at the Hester Center, and we're going to have people, we're going to have, the census is going to be present, they're going to have recruiters there to help people apply and make sure they have all the proper documentation, and then the jobs last from January to July, and the, and the salary is going to be 17.50 an hour. Plus, they're, they're going to pay you to train all throughout the month of January, as well as car mileage reimbursement. So I, we thought it'd be a great opportunity to kind of get jobs, as well as promote the census. So that's going to be the second week of January. We haven't selected a date yet, but we will this week, and we'll be at the Hester Center. And then, so that'll be the second week of January. Upcoming, as well as MLK Day, which is January 20th, we'll have our census rep there. We have our next Complete Count Committee meeting to January 22nd. At our February Business Over Coffee event, our, our census rep Sandy will be present as well. Then we will have an E-Blast and utility flyer insert in March. We are doing a Facebook Live Q&amp;A on March 12th, uh, March 11th, excuse me, and then at our Senior Health Fair, we will have our census rep Sandy present. And then finally, March 27th, which is a couple days before Census Day, which is April 1st, we are going to have our community census celebration. We have partnered with Netgraze Melt Bus. She will have the, the bus present over at Sarah Sims Park, so we'll have people actually filling out the census at the bus and have a community celebration, just to kind of culminate all of our, all our efforts throughout the past year. So those are our upcoming events for the census.
John, could you just repeat? How much was it per hour?
17.50 an hour. Those are going to be census takers. They'll be going door-to-door. There's also clerical work, that'll be 15.50 an hour, and that will be at the West Palm Beach location for the Census Office of Australian Avenue.
Fantastic. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, John, thank you. You know, you talk faster than I do, and that's kind of amazing. Can you get us a copy of everything that you said? I'm just saying with the dates and things, so that we will know what is going on, because...
Want me to run through it again?
No, not, no, 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 no. Get us a copy.
Copy. Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, don't run through it again.
Let's see tomorrow morning, you got it, sir.
I can't take another one of them speed things, no.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yes.
He's cracking me up today. John, I just wanted to ask for clarity. Are there any restrictions to the jobs in terms of, are, like, you know, nonviolent felons or anything obstructed from being able to apply for these jobs? Would they be hired if they, you know, is there a band with the boxes? Can you clarify on that?
Yes, we'd be clarified. Our, our census rep Sandy did state that a criminal background does not disqualify you from being accepted, as well as if you're not a, a, he, he told us, and we do have to get some clarification on this, if you're a citizen or not. There, there are some, some employment, you have to have an eligible visa to, to work in the US, but not be a resident, because we do have some Creole, and Spanish speakers who are going to be vital to these efforts, so those are some of the, the qualifications for it. But all you have to do is be 18 years old, and, and with the census trackers, you have to have access to a car, but those are the only qualifications. There really aren't that many more.
Okay, if, if you can just send me any...
All the information, all right.
Oh, yeah, all that information.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other?
You all finished?
That's it. Do you have any questions?
No, I have a question, but I have something to state to the city manager, and that is, Lori, since we have our three beautiful signs in the city of Boynton, you all could put the census thing on there and let it roll for us. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Is there any further questions on this item? Seeing none. Moving next to item 3B, announcement by Eleanor Chrisell, Public Communications and Marketing Director, regarding the 2020 Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Event.
Good evening, Eleanor Chrisell, Director of Public Communications and Marketing. Good evening. The city, in conjunction with the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, invite the community to the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Event that will be held Monday, January 20th, 2020, at Sarah Sims Park, and include the grand reopening of the park, which was initially canceled due to weather. The event will be held at 12 noon. We invite all community members to be a part of planning this free family event, and it will include music, children activities, food vendors, and more. For more information, we encourage you to call the office at 742-6642, or visit us on boynton-beach.org backslash MLK.
Eleanor, I've been receiving a lot of phone calls from citizens in District 2 saying, "What are we going to do for the MLK celebration? Is this all you all planning on doing?" Because they said nobody's contacted them, you know, the churches, they said that they would like to participate. We used to have a march, we used to have a parade, we used to have a gala, and I'm just trying to find out if this, for you all are going this year, because if it is, you know, I'm just saying, it's a bit let down. I'm sorry for District 2, because after all, they're celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and this is all you all are doing. I'm just saying, for us, I am concerned. And I'm going to speak for District 2, and the Afro-Americans over there, they're going to say that this is unacceptable. They have been reaching out and saying, "What are you all are doing?", and I'm trying to find out, "This is it." I could tell them.
Eleanor, do we have an MLK committee with the...
That's what we're encouraging tonight, which we're trying to get members of. John has already spoken with several individuals who are also serving on our committee. We will encourage anybody that would like to help us plan that event.
Okay.
To call us at that number or visit us.
And I'm also aware that, you know, that Monday's also the federal holiday, the Day of Service, if I'm not mistaken?
It is the Day of Service, correct?
And so that way, we can also speak to our other nonprofit organizations to try to do something in the morning before our MLK celebration on the 20th.
We did discuss that, yes.
And so what would be the best, is calling the number that you mentioned is the best way to get involved in the MLK committee and the Day of Service?
Yes, sir. Or they could email marketing@BBFL.us.
Marketing@BBFL.us, okay. That's the email address. And do we have, and so our next city commission meeting, will we have more information or...
Yes, and we're just getting the postcards out and the posters out right now.
So what I'm asking then is, do we have a planned meeting for the MLK committee in between those two days?
In between...
Our first city commission meeting in January on the 7th?
Again, we're just reaching out to form the committee, and hopefully we'll have a meeting next week of those interested in helping us.
Okay. Could we try to plan for a meeting on the 30th? Because I know the 31st, people are busy.
We could.
All right, so if we have...
Let's write it down, John.
That way, we at least have something and people can say, "I'm sorry, I can't make it, but I'd like to be included..."
Okay, perfect.
"...for that discussion, and that way, it's a fifth Monday, so I know we don't got any, have anything."
Thank you.
Eleanor, regards to this committee, have you reached out to the committee that served last year?
We have not specifically called Reverend Dane's Bowie yet, who was the chairman of last year's event, but we will, we can do that tomorrow.
That'd be a great starting point.
Clergy Bowie.
The clergy's there, you know, they're trying to find out what is happening, you know.
So we'll plan for a meeting on the 30th?
Yeah, they're just...
Well, we'll definitely reach out tomorrow. It's definitely on our planner for tomorrow and also on Friday.
All right, thank you so much. And then, is there, you get our next announcement?
Okay. So 10 days ago, the city's 49th Annual Parade was held on Saturday, the 7th, in downtown Boynton. This year, there were seven entries with a total of 1,875 participants. With the many entries, our three judges, who are all our media partners, Amy Barrett from the Sun Sentinel, Miranda from WPTV, and Jane Newser from the Coastal Star, were judges and had a very hard time selecting the award recipients. This year, there were 10 new award categories, a 50% increase over last year. In addition, a mayor's traveling trophy and a people's choice traveling trophy were added. Right now, we're live on Facebook to announce this year's award winners. Outstanding, whoops. Oh.
Laura, clicker. Do you want to click it? I don't click.
Sorry, we didn't find the clicker. Outstanding musical performance, Galaxy E3 Elementary School Dynamic Impact Drumline. The judges' comments included "Wow" and "Love the bow ties." The outstanding use of technology, a new category, was Point Sienna STEM Elementary School. School. And we are sure they won because of their robot out front, that's all they made. Outstanding artistic design was Sunshine Circus Arts, and this was their first year in our parade, and as a small business in Boynton Beach, they teach circus art. Outstanding display of fantasy, Delray Beach Medical Center. We know Boynton Beach loves superheroes, and once again, they visited us. Thank you Hulk and Thor for their special appearance. Outstanding depiction of life in Boynton Beach, the winner is the Boynton Beach Inclusion Team. This group included a dune buggy, surfboard, sea turtles, palm trees, tank tops, and a dog that loves the beach. Outstanding interpretation of the theme, the Boynton Beach Lakes High School Ram Regiment Band. The judges' comments included "Nice sounds altogether, just loved it." Outstanding display of entertainment, Boynton Beach Community High School Tiger Sound Band, and our own Boynton Beach Community High School Tiger Sound Band really roared and danced down Federal Highway for us. Outstanding display of showmanship, the City of Delray Beach Diamond and Pearls Dance Team, and the judges' comments included "Best dance, complete with tumbling, handsprings, and ending with confetti." Most whimsical goes to the Schoolhouse Children Museum and Learning Center, and the grunge stole the hearts of the judges. Most creative, FBI Kids and Dream Team Elite Dance. The judges' comments included "Super in sync," and they certainly engaged the crowd. This year, for additional after-event engagement, we developed an online photo gallery on Facebook and requested the community vote for their favorite parade entry for the People's Choice Award category. In seven days, the city's Facebook followers increased 159%, our page views increased 249%, and our post engagement increased 685%. The result and winner of the People's Choice Award goes to...
Nope, that's not it.
Whoops, right here, Right Horizons at Boynton Beach. And the two additional awards that we indicated earlier, these awards will be a traveling trophy that will go year to year to the entry that won. So, this is the first year that we're doing it, and the Mayor's Choice Award goes to Southern Custom Iron and Art. And for a small business in Boynton Beach, they made a big impact. The People's Choice Award, which I already announced, and they received 329 online Facebook posts, 32 comments, and 14 shares. So, all these awards will be handed out and delivered to the school recipients this year, so we can have additional photo ops with the winners. Thank you.
So, Eleanor, I have a quick question. So, there was a lot of pictures taken. Are they uploaded onto a cloud so that anybody can see them or download them, or who owns those pictures?
We own them.
Okay.
We hired the photographers. They are on SnugMug right now, which the public doesn't have access to. I'll go through them tomorrow and get them on our website as our plan, like we did for the board dinner.
You don't have to do it all in one day. We'll give you some time.
And we also had drone footage, so we can see the crowd and from the top up, from 10th to 1st.
Thank you, thank you so much. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. I'd like to say regards to Galaxy E3 Elementary School, I'd like to say bravo to them, I'd like to say to the two guys that work with them, and also to the school itself, I'm just saying. I remember when they first appeared in our first parade, they just had black pants, white shirt. I even enjoy their uniforms now, I have watched them grow. Sitting up here, I'm just saying, I remember when they first appeared, real small, I know some of them have graduated and went on, and I'm just saying, the parents should be proud, that school should be proud, and the city of Boynton should be proud. I'd also like to give kudos to Point Santa for the STEM thing, because after all, that might be before my time, but Point Santa is my elementary school, and anytime I hear anything about Point Santa, I'm going to toot my own horn, because it's the whole frog who can't praise his own pond. Thank you, Point Santa, thank you.
We had the most schools participate and the most bands this year. We had 11 bands, and all the schools in our area.
I'd like to give an honorable mention to Palm Beach State College, that for the first time, their drum line performed in our parade, and it was really cool, and I was, I am a professor at Palm Beach State, and I remember seeing the signs all over campus about them recruiting to get a drum line, and to actually see them perform in our parade for the first time, that was really fantastic, so I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that. And in addition to that, I also wanted to just put out there the fact that, you know, these kids and these groups, I mean, it's phenomenal, and I work in West Palm, so seeing some of them from Roosevelt, from Palm Beach Lakes, who were here and performing, and, you know, are going all across the county, it's an exciting thing. So, you know, we're excited that we're doing this, and we continue to do this, and, you know, the fact that you did it like a, the People's Choice thing, I think that's the first year we've done that, right?
This year.
And listen to those phenomenal statistics that you got back, so this is definitely a hit. Our community loves these parades, and as I said, my six and three-year-old approved, so y'all did good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. And so, the next, anything else regarding this item? The next announcement is regarding the menorah lighting that is in the city of Boynton Beach by Chabad Boynton. They've been doing this for over 20 years, and I don't know if we've ever had a partnership with them doing this in the city. And so, I'd like to request that our marketing department reach out to Chabad Boynton to see if we can't help promote this event in the city of Boynton Beach. It is on December 29th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And they say it's the 25th Annual Menorah Lighting. Is any other announcements? Seeing none, we're moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. November ended on a high note with solid visitation and increased membership sales compared to last year. We saw many new faces over Thanksgiving, and lots of dads and grandparents accompanying and playing side-by-side with their little ones. Additionally, we're pleased to report that a new funder selected the museum as an organization to support. The Henry Niasse Foundation supported our initiative to reach more underserved children with a grant in the amount of $15,000 to support our Museum on the Go and Art of the Story programs this coming year. This will enable us to bring our interactive and exciting activities to children in the community. December brings an assortment of holiday-themed activities in addition to our regular programming. Guests have enjoyed or will enjoy such activities as a daily holiday-themed storytime, variety of make-and-take projects, including ornaments, gingerbread people, picture frames, and others, Fabulous Fun Fridays with themes such as Winter Wonderland and Santa's Workshop, Holiday Music with Ms. Marcia, Crazy Candy Science Lab on Friday, December 27th, and the Science of Snow on Friday, January 4th. Those looking to blow off a little steam before Christmas Day, the museum will be open until 2:00 p.m. on Christmas Eve, will also be open until 2:00 p.m. on New Year's Eve. The museum staff looks forward to seeing you at this festive time of year, and we wish everyone the happiest of holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, I'd like to say, it seems like nobody else up here heard, the $15,000 grant, I'd like to say congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
And Suzanne, before you head out, are you doing something like you've done before, celebrating New Year's on, at noon?
No, we are not doing that. We are, our participation decreased dramatically, because the zoo does quite an over-the-top noon year. We will be open.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Ed Chase, I'm the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs for Palm Beach County, and I wanted to come here tonight to thank you for your support of the census, and thank you for your efforts on behalf of the census. An accurate census count is important to our county commission, and it is imperative that we do everything we can to count every single living, breathing human being, once, only once, and in the right place. Palm Beach County is working with more than 25 other municipalities, which have created complete count committees, and one of my jobs is that I'm happy to steal good ideas from those committees and share other good ideas with other committees. I didn't think I would wake up this morning being so excited about the census, but what you just saw was absolutely remarkable. There is not another municipality who started earlier, or who has come out of the gate faster with their census efforts than the city of Boynton Beach, and you have Laura and John to thank for that. Palm Beach County, we have shared some of our materials with them, more than this. This doesn't happen in any other municipality. This is incredible. Your efforts to count everyone, and especially in those hard-to-count areas, is going to make sure that you have a full and complete count. When I talk about the count, I talk about the census, I refer to it as kind of like the Godfather. The census isn't about counting people. The census is about power and money, and where does it go? And when we have a full and complete count, power and money flows to the proper areas to take care of all of those people. On behalf of Palm Beach County, I just wanted to say thank you to your staff, and thank you to the council for not only empowering them, but giving leadership to other municipalities in this county on behalf of the census efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Chase, excuse me. Mr. Chase, one question. Could you just tell the public, since you mentioned money, approximately how much would the county and the city get per person that is counted?
Yes, sir. For every living, breathing human being that we count, that is approximately $1,600 per year, per citizen, over that 10-year period, coming to local government.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Herb Suss, 1711 Woodford, Boynton Beach. As you know, in the past, I told you about my Alzheimer's situation. It's improving, the treatments are looking very promising. Tonight, I want to tell you on another important factor. The last three weeks, I've changed my diet, I'm a total vegan, V-E-G-A-N, vegan. It has given me more energy, my wife also, my grandson, who's the captain of the Air Force, and his wife turned this on, we got books. And tonight, I want to tell you that it'll also help climate change. Getting rid of meat, you take Kraft Foods and all the other ones that are lobbying Congress with their foods, and what the kids are eating in school, and I was on a school board up in New York, and I can tell you, it's junk. I want to tell you some, that you can see on Netflix, what this does. It's called Game Changes, Forks Over Knives, What the Health, All the Flex, and Save That Planet. It'll help climate change. If anybody wants these, and it's also on YouTube, when you see these films, let me tell you, you're going to change to be a vegan. The government agencies that give you diets, to, you know, what they do to their systems, it doesn't work, it's junk. And there's a lot of lobbying going on into Washington. If you want to save the planet by getting rid of, and getting obnoxious gases into the atmosphere, it's the way to go. And I'm telling you, I've got more energy, more boom, and I feel better. I feel better, and it's going to add years to my life. And I want to tell you that that's the way to go. There's any questions on any of these films? It's all of it on Netflix. So, I hope everybody pays attention, because, yes, question?
Wait, you can't call me, the mayor has to call me.
Excuse me?
Mayor has to recognize.
Yes, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you.
I've always had energy, as you all know, but I got more now. Ba 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 boom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Mr. Suss, don't go anywhere, Mr. Suss, Mr. Suss, do not go anywhere. My question is, not question, a comment. I want to, sir, just tell you, many, many years ago, I think it was probably about 12 years ago, that you started talking about climate change here in Boynton, and we kind of like brushed it off, but every time I hear something now on TV about climate change, I associate it with your name, sir, and I want to just tell you personally, thank you for making us aware of this, before it got to the shape that it's in now. I've been paying attention, sir, and I want to tell you personally, thank you for opening up my eyes, thank you.
I'm also, 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 just get involved with climate change, because we are, I used to be on the Palm Beach County Climate Change Exchange, and I can tell you now, we are now, unfortunately, at a point of no return. By 2030, no comment.
I can't go vegan now, because I got a lot of meat in my freezer, so I'm going to keep eating meat, but I might change, but not now. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at public comments, public audience? Going once, going twice, moving on to administrative. Our item is appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. Our first, we have two regular and two alternate on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and we have three applicants for three regular positions on the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board. Shauna, if the vice mayor is not here, are we able to nominate a candidate, or...
No.
No.
No. It would have to be tabled, if that's the case.
Okay.
It's a two.
All right. Commissioner Pensurga.
For the CRA Advisory Board, I'd like to nominate Sharon Grevick.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, motion passes unanimously. I'd like to appoint Angela Cruz.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose. We have two students and one regular on the Education Youth Advisory Board, we have two regular and two alternate on the Historic Resource Preservation Board, we have three regular and two alternate on the Library Board, and we have one applicant for the Senior Advisory Board. Commissioner Pensurga.
Excuse me, she's going to serve on two boards, what's your suggestion?
I was going to ask the same question.
Yep, I spoke to her earlier, and she said yes.
You're willing to do both?
Yes.
In that case, I will nominate Angela Cruz.
Second.
Senior Advisory Board.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
And I see that she's in the audience. Would you like to speak about your, about being appointed?
Good evening, my name's Angela Cruz, and I am a recent homeowner in the city of Boynton Beach. I'm very excited to become more involved in the community, and I have a background, bachelor's degree in legal studies, and a master's degree in public administration. So, I do want to continue to dedicate myself in public service, and I think that would be a great way to start. Thank you for your appointment.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your email that you sent me, thank you.
Thank you.
You got a chance to meet me tonight, hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And would anyone else like to speak if they were appointed? I don't think I see Sharon here. All right, moving on to consent agenda, I'd like to pull Item 6C.
Are you pulling it or removing it?
Huh?
Didn't we remove that from the agenda?
No, that was 6F.
6F.
Uh, my bad. Mike Ruff. It's not your...
All right. Approve the request to release unity of title for 2848 Southeast First Court, also known as Lots 23 and 24 Dewey Heights, applicant Theodore C. Hoskinson. The reason why I asked is because I know that there's a huge banyan tree, you've got to go behind the podium. On that second property, and by making it two properties, you're able to tear down the banyan tree and build a new house, which I'm very excited for, and our, Ed Breeze, our senior planner, has told us that because you're a single-family residence, the tree protection ordinance that we have is not applicable. You know, there's a lot of shade cover there, and so, I can't demand, but I can request, if you'd put some extra trees on your property when you're building that home.
Well, to be honest with you, I... Well, to be honest with you, I love trees. I have a property in Delray Beach, which has a lot of trees. And we've already spent a couple hundred dollars trimming the oak tree that was in the back and making it look beautiful. And we plan on planting quite a few trees, so it's just that the banyan tree is where the front of the house would be.
Yeah.
So we plan on planting them. I don't know how many specifically you want, but I think you'll be pleased with the results of what we do.
All right. Well, thank you.
Comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. In regards to that banyan tree, sir, you know, I'm sorry to see it go as well. I'm just saying, we had a lot of banyan trees downtown that the city tore down, you know, and it looks kind of dead down there now, but I wish we could save as many banyan trees as we can. But, you know, good luck on your project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And I also want to thank you for all the hard work that you do with your Roots and Wings organization, you know, going to the different elementary schools and middle schools and making sure the teachers are having a good day, because we know that when teachers are happy, we have happy students.
We plan on adding a school or two in Boynton Beach next year to our reading, after-school reading program as well.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
We're working at six schools right now, all Title I schools, and we're going to keep on working.
All right. Well, thank you so much for what you do for the community.
Statement. Motion to approve the Remain-You'll-Consent Agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over $100,000. Would someone like to remove any of those items? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Public hearing. The proposed ordinance number 20-001, first reading, approve revision to the Workforce Housing Program, Amending the Land Development Regulations, Chapter 1, General Mission, Article 2, Definition, Article 5, Housing Initiatives, Section 2, Workforce Housing Program. Shauna, if you could read the title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land development regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2, Definitions, amending Chapter 1, Article 5, Housing Initiatives, Section 2, Workforce Housing Programs, Providing for Conflicts, Severability, Codification, and an Effective Date.
All right. So...
Hello, I'm the senior planner. So you're going to now look at the... This is our first set of revisions to the workforce housing ordinance. The current ordinance was approved in September of 2017 when we moved from the mandatory inclusionary zoning ordinance to the voluntary program with the density and height bonus. These revisions, initial set of revisions, we looked at particular part of the ordinance, and we picked up those sections that we thought would be most important, and we would revive the interest of the developers in the program. The most important of those will be extending the program past its current applicability. But before I go into it, I want, I would like you to look at some data regarding the Boynton Beach prices and incomes, how they are not aligned, and why is it that we're doing this program to begin with? We do not have right now an in-depth study for the affordability program in the city, but just if you look at those numbers, the single-family home median says price is $244,000 right now. Median household income in Boynton is $50,000. If we do the rule-of-them calculation that your housing price should be more or less three times your income, obviously, it does not align. The, we don't... The same thing applies to rent. The two-bedroom, two-bedroom rent average monthly, this is November 2019 data, is $1,726 in the city. The vacancy rate is 3.6%. So obviously, there's a shortage of affordable rental housing, and there's a shortage of housing for sale for all citizens within a certain income brackets. Sorry. Go too fast. The map shows you where is the, where is the ordinance applicable now. So this is a really small area in the TOD, Transit Oriented Development District. And again, we have extending, we propose to extend it to everywhere in the city where the mixed-use districts, all three of them, plus the special high-density residential land use classification is applicable. So that's the first change that we are, that we are doing, that we are proposed to do. And there are a couple of other changes. One change that is, I think, important is that we also propose that those development, the affordable housing developments, which are outside of that area, but they are 100% affordable, can also have, can also have the density bonus for 25%. The two, the two other changes is, that are proposed is that we are moving, we would remove the calculation of income eligibility from the Boynton Beach income, that is, that comes from American Community Survey, to the area median income that is provided by HUD, which is used in most...
Do you mind closing that door, please? Thank you.
Which is used in most affordable housing programs throughout the country, not just county. And the last, the last changes that we propose is the increasing on the fee in lieu. And as you... So we are suggesting, we are proposing that the fee in lieu for for-sale units would increase from about 40,000 to 83,000, and for rent units from the current 18,000 to about 37,000. So I think that's probably the main changes that we actually right now doing to the ordinance. We're going to continue looking at some other areas and also at the fee in lieu. But we, last year, we have set up in a division, the Housing Work Group. We're working with the Community Improvement Division and with the Economic Development for, we would like to start the comprehensive review of the land development regulation and see which, which regulation could be tweaked, could be introduced to promote more affordable housing. This could be the issue of development on non-conforming lots, minimum living area, accessory dwelling units, and parking requirements. All those have impact on the, on the attainment housing. So now, if you have any questions, please, I'm ready to entertain them.
Commissioner McCray. Thank you. We already have some projects in the hopper that we're working on that has to do with workforce housing. Will this help us, hinder us in what we're doing?
Sorry. Could you repeat the question, please?
We already have workforce housing on some projects that we're doing here in the city. Will this help us with what we're doing, or will this be a hindrance to what we're trying to do? Will this be beneficial?
I think, I think it will be beneficial. We haven't, the previous ordinances, I mean, the previous programs, there's no, right now, there are no units that have been built with the, with the help of this ordinance. So we would like to change that. So...
I think the two projects that Commissioner McCray is referring to, but Ocean Breeze East, Commissioner, remember, it won't impact them either way.
Yes.
But those aren't workforce housing.
Yes, but, yes, that will, well, that will, oh, yeah, I sent us to your question.
Excuse me, excuse me. Hold on, hold on. It's my question, but Lori, thank you for your comments. This is the way I'm going, mayor. Thank you. Let me get clarification. I'm just, if I'm going wrong, let me be clear, okay? Right now, I am not clear what is being proposed here at this commission. And I'm going to ask the question again and go ahead and answer. Will this affect the projects, as like Lori said, with the two projects that we have in the hopper? If this were not effective, then I'm okay with it.
Okay. Commissioner Romulus.
Yes. So I just need clarification in terms of what's the number for the HUD, AMI, and what's the number for the city of Boynton Beach median household income? I'd like to understand the difference.
So if we, for the, for the HUD numbers, the 60 to 220%, that's the percentage that we do, the, that program and all other municipalities do, that would be about between 45,000 and 90,000. If we do, if we stay with the Boynton Beach income based on American Community Survey, that would apply to people with income between 30,000 and about 61,000.
I'm not, okay, here's, here's the point that I'm trying to make, and this is the argument that I will make to my fellow board members, is that in the interest of understanding what our surrounding real estate looks like, Boynton Beach's real estate still relatively is cheaper, I would say, than perhaps the area, as in Palm Beach County. So if we're going to switch from looking at Boynton Beach's median household income to looking at the entire surrounding area median household income, that, I think, largely fluctuates and changes the rates that we will put into application when it comes to putting this ordinance into place. So I would like to revisit that conversation. It needs to be very clear to me that we are not increasing the threshold by making it the area median income rather than Boynton Beach median income, because I think if we keep it as Boynton Beach median income, it helps keep the prices lower and still thus therefore keeping the, keeping the affordability even more affordable. That's what I would propose, and that's what I would prefer to see. I'm seeing all the different changes in the ordinance, showing that we're shifting from using Boynton Beach as the house, as the median household income amount, and shifting to a HUD or whatever area median income amount, and I don't agree with that change.
And I'm on the same page.
We are looking for your recommendations from you. There are arguments, several ways, one of the arguments for getting away from the American Community Survey is that this is a, that number is a five-year, well, it's not really average, but it's a five-year average. We really don't have a good number for the, for the Boynton Beach median household income. I mean, we can take, we can take this, because as you, as I just said, this would reach into lower-income household than the, otherwise, the American, sorry, area median income, the HUD area median income would. So because this, this would allow people who are, who are making, say, 30 or 35,000 dollars to be part of that program, while if we switch to the area median income, HUD area median income, that the people who, who, you know, who can be eligible for that, for that program will start at 45,000.
Exactly. And that's, thank you for making my point. I needed to hear the numbers in order to make that point. That's my valid point right there, where I wouldn't want to shift over to the area median income. It needs to stay as the Boynton Beach median household income.
Okay. And what is the difference in the area versus Boynton Beach with the current numbers?
Area median income is the HUD...
No, no. What is the number?
What is the number? The, so...
You said 45,000 and 90,000.
For the, for the Boynton Beach.
30 to 61,000.
Same percentage.
One person talking at a time.
Speak into the mic.
Into the microphone, please, Hannah.
Sorry. 60,000 to 30,000 to 60,000 for Boynton Beach, and/or 45,000 to 90,000 if we're taking area median income.
Okay. So it's a range.
It's a range, yes, because we...
It's not, okay. That's, I just, that's the question. You answered it perfectly.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I'm happy that we are expanding the workforce housing ordinance outside of our TOD, one square, you know, one mile or so. The problem is, is I think you are mistaken with the fact that no developer is going to spend $80,000 in addition to build a house here. I think that increasing the prices is, is not a good way to go. I think the prices should be the same, because the whole point is that we want something. We want workforce housing, or we want the money. We don't want neither. And so this is kind of what happens when you have it voluntary, is they don't have, they have the option. For 10 years, we tried to make it mandatory. However, the commission at that time always decided to put a moratorium on it. And so, you know, I'm happy with moving forward with expanding the zone. I'm not happy, and hopefully, the commission will agree with me that we need to keep the rates the same until we figure out more of the whole thing so that we can get some either money or workforce housing, because, you know, the, the real estate market and the current economy, we don't know what's going to happen. And the last thing is, is that I think that we need to move forward with a mandatory workforce housing. So if they use the bonus, then we get something, and if they don't use the bonus, we still get something. Because we are not, we are having thousands and thousands of units, whether they're a single-family or multifamily, built in Boynton Beach, and we have not created a system for ourselves in the past 12 years to help fund affordable housing in our community. And I think that this is something that the board has to take a look at, that we have to find a way not, you know, it has to hurt a little bit to the developer to develop, because the reason why we did a voluntary one is because the staff thought the, our town square project was going to have workforce housing, but it doesn't, because the main issue for multifamily is that each parking space is $25,000 in a parking garage. So if you have two parking spaces and a parking garage, that's 50,000, where if they're just using the surface lot, that's only 5,000. So we need to understand that the parking requirement, all these take into effect when a developer is trying to build into Boynton Beach. So, you know, I would request that we keep the, the rates the same and expand the area. Commissioner Romulus.
Thank you, mayor. I was about to disagree with you, and then you walked it back, so I liked what you said after, as you wrapped it up. I am in 100% agree with you, agreement with you, that this ordinance needs to shift from a voluntary basis to a mandatory basis. I don't agree with you about the prices staying the same. I'm also uncomfortable with the current prices being proposed, so we should find some type of middle ground where we can bring down that, those in-lie costs, where there's still something that will be palatable, and that's what would also make this ordinance work as a mandatory ordinance and no longer just a voluntary ordinance. And as you pointed out, the fact that we have issues with parking regulations and things like that, that's something, as I believe Hannah mentioned, that staff will be going back into working through the LDRs to shift some things and make changes that will allow for any impediments that we, as a city, through our LDRs, are putting into place, that we reel back on some of those things to allow for affordable housing to be more appeasing to developers to come into the city and build. So I stand in agreement with you on certain points, and I just want to make those certain distinctions, that I would like to see the in-lie costs increase, because I still do think that they're a little too low for my taste. I just do agree with you that they're not necessarily going to have to go up to what the staff is currently proposing.
Yes. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. And you said that when we asked a question, let me make sure I'm saying it right, about what was the median household income for the city of Boynton, you stated, I could read that off the records... I could read that off the records, that you all have no record, I find that kind of hard to believe, with all the technology that we have around, and did I misunderstand you?
We have, what I was trying to say is that, we have, the only source of the median household income for the city is the Census, American Community Survey. This, the numbers that come, that we usually take, because they are reasonably good, are the five-year average. So that fifty thousand dollars that I just quoted, is, well, its calculation is complicated, but it's really five-day, five-year average, so if you ask me, what is the median household income in the city this year, I can't tell you, because we don't know. There's no, there's no data, Census does not provide, if there's a one-year data, it's very, very, you know, it's just not believable at all. And I don't think we have a data for one year for the median household income, it's usually, every time we use the, every time the cities use the median household income for the city, they use that American Community Survey five-year average. It's, you can, we can use it, there's no, there's not a problem with it, it's just because everybody else is using, using the other data, and sometimes, you know, if you have the, if the city, if the city department is going to administer some of those programs and look at them, it creates a certain, shall I say, mess, if you have, if you have different, different rules for different programs. But I say, I have no problem, if your, if your recommendation is to say, staff has no problem in staying with the Boynton Beach median income as per American Community Survey.
All right, thank you, I'm in agreement with what Commissioner Romulus is saying, I'm, you know, Mayor, I agree, but only a few things that you said, but I'm in more agreement with what Commissioner Romulus just summed up, this is the way I'm leaning.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
So, Hannah, the question that I have is if we wrote it into the original ordinance in terms of using the Boynton Beach median household income, and though I do understand that you mentioned that we never actually put the ordinance into practice with any developer coming into the downtown area, what were we basing that off of, if you're saying that there's no real, so what were we basing that number off of, or what?
We will, we will go back to the median household income as per American Community Survey, that's, that will be the number that we'll take. There's nothing really wrong with this number, I'm trying to say, but the, because everybody else uses that number.
So, Hannah, the census.gov, you know, I can look up online, they have a, not a range, just a number of fifty thousand, five-hundred-sixty-one dollars for the city's median income for Palm Beach County, it's fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred-fifty-six dollars. Are those, those are kind of the numbers that we're using, it's, we're below the median income for the county, and the county includes areas like Belle Glade and Palm Beach, and so, you know, it's skewed in certain ways, and that's why we're using the median.
Well, we always use the median.
And so, you know, it's also kind of like, we also need to have a little bit more information, if, you know, you're spending thirty percent of your salary on a mortgage, what would that entail for us? Because currently, we see that a one-bedroom's fifteen hundred dollars, and so that's, what is that, like fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars a year, so that's almost, you know, a third of someone's, who makes fifty thousand. So that's kind of what we're looking for, is that how do we get to that eighteen thousand dollars a month payment, you know, for the mortgage and all the insurance and the taxes and the, and the lights and everything, for the types of workforce housing that we want to have? So, I know that it's kind of, we're doing with allotted numbers, but it's kind of like, okay, if we know that fifteen hundred dollars is kind of what we want a resident to pay for a workforce house, how do we work around that, to get that to work? Is something, but, you know, I'd like to move forward with this ordinance, and then we could come back at the second reading for the exact number of the in lieu fee. I'm gonna go with Commissioner Romulus, and then you, Hannah.
So the only thing that I would propose in, in speak, this whole AMI conversation, is, moving forward, we know that home values in Boynton Beach will increase, especially with what we're bringing online with downtown and other things, so perhaps part of the language should be, I'm just throwing this out there, and you let me know if this could work, or legally, you let me know if this could work, perhaps the language should be Boynton Beach median income or area median income, whichever is less. That way, we account for the future and whatever price changes that happen, because maybe in the future, Boynton Beach's median income, for some reason, becomes higher than Palm Beach County's, I don't know if that would ever happen, but perhaps we mitigate the scenario by putting in that language, I'm just kind of brainstorming out there, is that something that could be done?
No reason why not.
Okay, well, then I'd like to see that language, just to make sure we account for any future changes that may, that may change, I want to always make sure we're using whichever of the two is less.
Can I make a comment also?
Yes.
The commentary regarding the mandatory programs, one thing has to be clear, in twenty, in last year, the legislature passed the law, which requires in all inclusionary zoning mandatory ordinances, that the benefits that are offered to developers must offset the cost to the developer. This is a very complicated calculations, the Palm Beach County has had a serious economic development consultants to do these calculations, the, another city in the county that has the mandatory program, which is, which is, which is the, anyway, one more, also had a consultant that, that basically spent a lot of time doing those calculations, because you have to have a certain type of housing, they have, I mean, it's, the minimum, the minimum profitability that they take for the developer is ten percent, and so, you, it's, this is something that we cannot do in-house. We had, we would have to hire a consultant to make sure that if your, if your decision is to move to the, back to the mandatory, we would have to have a, we would have to have a reasonable assurance that that program meets the new law.
All right, and so if we kept our old workforce housing ordinance, would we have to require it to the new law? Or is it, would?
No, if you, if you want to make it, if you want to make it mandatory, that's.
No, no, I'm asking, if we didn't change it in 2017, and we kept the one from 2007, would we be required?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know. And so, that's kind of where I mentioned earlier, is that we want to entice developers to take the voluntary workforce housing ordinance, whether it's the density or the, and they're building units, or to pay for that capability. I, no, no one's gonna spend an extra forty thousand dollars per unit for the workforce housing, when they have to spend an extra fifty thousand for parking, it's ninety thousand dollars off the top, not including any of the construction costs and labor. I mean, that's kind of where, I, you know, I'm in the sense that we need to lower the fee, because we want workforce housing, or we want the ability to subsidize workforce housing for our residents with that fee that they pay. Commissioner Romulus.
So, question, what is the current balance of our housing trust?
Do we have a housing trust?
Right.
So, zero.
Exactly, my point, exactly, so, you know, the point is, is what we've been doing hasn't worked, so, I'm of the opinion that I'm putting the onus on staff to do phase two of this, which is to go and deep dive into our LDRs and make changes, so for example, Mayor, when you talk about fifty thousand dollars for parking, when we change our LDRs to allow for a, an affordable housing developer to come in and say, well, instead of the, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, two parking spaces per unit or something requirement, we're only gonna require for you to build point seven, or one, parking spaces per unit, because you're an affordable, you're adding an affordable housing component, that will offset the deterrent in terms of what you're talking about, Mayor. So, that's what I'm asking for, for staff to come back, which is what Hannah has proposed, they will be doing, to come back with some later amendments to make those changes feasible and make it more palatable, to build affordably in this, in this city. And again, I do agree with you that I believe some of those in lieu prices that we're proposing are a little bit high, so maybe we can bring them down, but I don't want to bring them all the way down to what they currently are now, because I still think, and I don't know who just said it earlier, it does have to hurt a little bit in negotiations, if both sides, you know, come out unhappy, then something has worked out right. So, if we are trying to make affordable housing be a, 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 something that we take seriously here in Boynton Beach, our in lieu prices have to reflect that, you know, forty thousand dollars doesn't get you anything in terms of putting it into a trust and building something for, for, in terms of units for later on down the road, it really doesn't do much. So, if we're serious about, you know, trading, doing a trade-off, those in lieu prices have to be a little bit more competitive, and I don't, I don't, I didn't like them when we originally made this ordinance, and I wouldn't like for them to stay where they are now.
All right. So, you know, the problem with this is that when it, negotiations is when you had an adversarial, if it hurts, that's okay, we're not trying to be adversarial with developers here, we're trying to entice them, and so unless it's a benefit and it feels good, they're not gonna take the option for the workforce housing. That's why you're, you know, I'd rather have something than nothing, because thirty-six thousand, seven-hundred-sixty dollars for a rental unit, or eighty-two thousand, nine-hundred-eighty-six dollars for a for-sale unit, whether it's a condo, whether it's an apartment, whether it's a single-family home, whether it's a townhouse, those, those numbers are too high, and I think the original numbers were too high, because if they weren't too high, then we would have had that density bonus, because then they would have been able to get that extra spaces in the parking garage, because we already fixed our parking ordinance to allow for the lower units, and I don't think our parking ordinance can get any lower unless we try to figure something else out that nobody else has done. So, you know, I'm not happy with the increase in the rates at all, and so that's kind of where I'm at, and so, because I, you know, what's the point of doing something if it's not gonna get used?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to hear from staff where these numbers came from, and what's the justification for them? In lieu prices.
For the fee-in-law?
Yes.
The, there are several type methodologies that you can come with the fee-in-law, and lots of cities do it different ways, the, for the, we are based it on what we call affordability gap, what's affordable for the, for the, what is the market rate, current market rate, and what's affordable, and the difference. However, when we did these calculations, I can provide you with the calculations as they were, you know, three years ago, we then made a decision, and the commission approved the, approved the decision that we do not take as a fee-in-law the entire affordability gap, because that would have been much higher, but a certain percentage of affordability gap, if I remember, it was about twenty percent, it is a policy decision. The county initially had for single-family homes, hundred-and-sixty thousand, and then, you know, they lowered to hundred-and-twenty, I don't remember how it exactly went, but it's, it's a, whatever, whatever the methodology you use, you come up with a certain number, and then you can take, you can take a percentage of it, as I, it's entirely a policy decision, however, if you have a, if you have a consultant who has, who can, who can do the numbers, and basically look at, you know, what is, what exactly is, what exactly those numbers mean to the developer, what are the costs, these are complicated calculations, but that's what we did, and lots of, lots, throughout the states, lots of, lots of municipalities and lots of counties base their fee-in-law on the, on the affordability gap, some base it on the cost of affordable housing, some base it on the amount of subsidy the city has to give to a developer, to, to the, you know, the owner of the, of the developer to, to bring that to that thirty percent of income. In some cities, it's a question of negotiation, they're all kind of, but I can provide you with the, with the calculations that we did three years ago.
I think also with those calculations, we also need to, so, what would it look like? So we know that with our town square project, you know, with those residents, what would it look like if they used the workforce housing bonus, so that we can see that it would have been profitable, or we could see that it wasn't gonna be profitable? Because we don't have a real-life example, which we can use, and so we need to figure that out moving forward. And so, the reasoning why I'm in favor of lowering it, because we always have the ability to raise it if people are giving us money, and we feel that, oh, they're only just giving us money, because they want to use the density bonus, whereas the opposite is not true. If nobody's using it, then we always have to decrease it, otherwise we don't have any sort of workforce housing. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. My whole take on this is that I'm just, and I listen to staff, I listen to the mayor, and I listen to Commissioner Romulus. I think that you all need to go back and bring something back to us in the simplest form, what I can understand, because right now, I'm thoroughly confused as hell, I don't know what I vote on right now, and I'm not trying to be funny, the more we talk, the worse it sound to me, I'm sorry, I don't know which way to go, right or left, and I'm just saying until I see some scenarios, like the mayor has said, this probably need to go back, and y'all need to come back to us again, because I don't know which way to move, I'm just saying, because if I vote in favor of it, it might be wrong, if I vote against it, it might be wrong, right now, I can't vote.
All right, and so, Mike, is there anything you'd like to say?
No, at this point, we can provide more information to you, this is not an easy one, we did not expect this to be an easy one for you. One of the things that Hannah, I was trying to avoid saying, but it needs to be said, and it's not a perfect science, we have tried to walk a fine line of acceptability, and also produce something, we know, there was a point in time where it was going to be, when we originally started looking at having a mandatory ordinance or considering it, the economy was recovering, and then it was suspended again for that reason, because if we put into place what we wanted to, to produce housing that we wanted to offset what was happening in the market, it's a good chance we would have pushed developers to another community. We don't know that for a fact, but we know that because of land values, when those lands were purchased before the slump, and they were having to develop under those economic conditions, they were struggling as it was. So you're right, Mayor, we do need to look at what the potential costs are, if there's other ways that we can offset that, but those numbers, the fees were really kind of trying to walk the line. We do have a table with, with what fees are from other communities, they're generally higher. Why is that? Are those communities more, have they got something else in their system that makes it more affordable? Is there greater demand, are they getting more for the units? There's different factors. We can come back, we have heard some of your uncertainties and questions, and we can bring that back to you on second reading if you'd like.
Yeah.
So.
So I'd like to see some of those comparison numbers of the in lieu fees, and how they, how they compare to what's currently being proposed on this updated ordinance, when you come back.
I'm sorry?
When you come back, I'd like to see the comparison of the in lieu fees of other communities, based on what's being proposed on this one.
We have, there aren't that many local programs, so it makes for kind of a small table, but we do have a slide with, with some comparisons.
So, and also, could you bring back what the county has done?
No.
Because I believe that they have the workforce housing ordinance as well, and how much money have they received versus how many units have been built, and what were their rates?
We have the products.
Yeah.
We don't have on here, we have started, Hannah has contacted representatives of those jurisdictions, so we do, it's not in this table, we do have some of the, what's been yielded in those communities. Understand, it's apples and oranges, some of them have very limited geographic areas where it applies and other conditions or requirements, but we do have some of that data.
Okay, I'd like to see, and I understand the apples and oranges.
Okay. I'd like to see, and I understand the apples and oranges comparison, but I think it's still just good to see it and understand. And then you can, of course, lay down the, the, the different disparities or changes that, how they compare to us.
We can do our best.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes.
Could you call up Mike Simon? I feel like he'd like to say something.
I just heard you were public comment, appreciating.
Come up.
All right. Yeah, we'll have a public comment.
I don't know. I felt like he.
Yeah, he's been standing.
Hi. Michael Simon, CRA Executive Director and resident at 714 Hillcrest Road. This is a very important ordinance, and it, it started out to be very simple. I think that, that it has, it has been made more confusing and complex just by virtue of the conversation that you're having. There's, there's just really some major points that you need to, to remember that you're trying to do. The absolute most important thing you can do in this ordinance is make it citywide and make it available to anyone that's already doing 100% affordable units. Those two things are a no-brainer. This, this concern about the AMI, the American Unit Survey of whatever, or the HUD, AMI, you want to use the HUD? It's the industry standard. It's been the industry standard since CDBG, CHIP, home, every affordable housing program in the country uses the AMI of your county. You want that because while you think you're lowering by using this survey and you're using a 30% to 60% of median income, that's the range, your, your, that range is already covered in the AMI that HUD uses of your county. What you've done is you've, you've reduced the amount of people that can actually get the help because that, the 60 to the $93,000 or $91,000 individual that you could have been able to get into a home or a rental like 500 Ocean or, or anything else that's more market, those people now are still not getting the assistance. If you go with Boynton's, which is clearly lower because the median income in Boynton is lower than the county, it's a disadvantage. So I would definitely recommend that you use the HUD, and don't give it a second thought. It's not a big deal. That's what everybody uses. You're doing the right thing by that. Thirdly, this in lieu of, I think, is also getting confused because the in lieu of is if the developer wants to add units to their downtown, we get the, the density bonus, I get to add 20 units to my 100 or 80-unit complex. Now I'm at 100. Or, and I can keep that market by paying the fee that you've set up, which for homeownership, if I was building 80 homes and wanted to build 20, I'd have to pay you into the fund 82,000 and change. That 82,000, if I don't build them on the site, is a number that's going to help the city do what? Go build more affordable housing. The reason why the county's number is 160,000 is you can't buy a lot in Palm Beach County for less than 160,000. So having less money in lieu of doing the affordable housing doesn't help you go buy more affordable housing. And in the case of rental, it's 36,000. If you were buying and building an apartment complex right now, you wouldn't want to pay as a developer for land more than $24,000 to $25,000 a door. So if that unit that we're talking of in lieu of is 36,000, and he doesn't want to build any market, any workforce in his building, but he wants to pay you to go build it somewhere else, the 36,000 is the number you would use for the door of another affordable housing development somewhere else, just the one door. You're not using the 36,000 to do all of your work. It's, it's, what do you, what does it take to get into the market of affordable housing? If you have to buy a lot under homeownership, what is your average lot cost in your city? Is it 82,000 or is it 160? If you're building rental, what's the cost per door? Is it $25,000 a door or is it 80,000 a door? And you would, that, the minimum contribution that you want in lieu of, we want them to build it in the buildings that they're building it in. But if they don't want to do it, and they're going to pay you to give you some money to go try to do it somewhere else, the money that we get should be able to do something other than just do down payment assistance. Maybe it goes, buys a lot. Maybe it can help offset the cost of the house. So the lower that gets, the least you can do with it. And you have two different categories. One for the guy that's building homeownership that wants to build all market rate, I mean, yes, all market rate and pay in lieu to get the extra units, or he's doing rental and he wants to build all market rate, but he's going to pay in lieu to get the density. Then you take that money and you go try to do it. That, that's, it's really not, you know, lowering it isn't going to be good. But, but even if you want more information on that, don't, don't pause the break, don't hit the brake on passing this ordinance because you have in the wings, 100% affordable complexes coming your way within the next 30 to 60 to 90 days. If, if they can't get the density bonus on a, on a complex that's already 100% affordable, we've, we've talked about the developer not wanting to do it. We basically have said, we don't even want to do it. So every, everybody doing 100% affordable under the guidelines of the city and the LDR should absolutely get the density bonus, not just in that little circle, right? And then secondly, you want to go to that HUD, but either way you, you don't, please don't put the brake on it. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk to you about it between readings or tonight. But this is, I'm very passionate about this. I've been doing this my whole life, as far as a career professionally. It's, it's very simple. Don't complicate it. Don't get in the weeds about it. And, and use the staff, but I'm happy to, to help any way I can.
Yes, Lori.
And one of the things that I've mentioned to a couple of you, but I've had a chance to chat with all of you, is to, we want to, to sit down with you individually because you just heard from Michael and you're hearing from staff. It's, it's not a super simple issue, and there's no perfect one package that's going to make everybody happy. But I'd like to have you sit down with our workforce group and, and have a deeper dive, individual conversation with them, and let us be able to explain a little more, I think, than what we can do here in the, the public setting. But continue that conversation before, perhaps even before the second reading, or like Mike said, at least let's get the expansion of the, the area done tonight and maybe hold off on some of the other, because we plan on coming back with a much deeper dive. It just won't be in the next 30 days.
Is Michael Simon part of that group?
Yes.
Absolutely. I think it'd be helpful.
All right. Commissioner McCray, then Commissioner Romulus.
Thank you. Mr. Simon, make up, sir, please.
I want to tell you thank you. You spoke tonight better than you speak at the CRA. Now I understand
It's the podium.
what I'm doing.
It's the podium. It changes everything. Thank you.
Thank you. I can move now. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Romulus.
Right. And, and Mayor, that's why I asked for Mr. Simon to come up and speak because I know he's been working with staff, so I didn't consider him as public comment. I considered him as staff because he's literally been, you know, boots on the ground, working on this ordinance to reframe it and make it the way it is. So I make a move, a motion to, to move and accept this ordinance as written by staff. I know we've had lots of conversations about changes that we could make, but in lieu of what Director Mike Simon has stated, I'm, I am okay with, with leaving the ordinance as written by staff.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. So any further discussion from the board? Any further discussion from the public audience? We spent a good amount of time discussing it, so I look forward to our second discussion in January. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Katz is absent. Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pincirga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is 4-0.
We have, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I, if it wouldn't be too over the top, I really would actually stand up and clap for staff. But you guys really, I, I do want to thank you all for taking the time to go through this. This was a, a request of mine to, to ask you to expand this ordinance and allow for it to go citywide. And I know it's taken several weeks to rework it and make it work. So thank you for your commitment, your dedication to this. I know it took a lot of time and, and effort, but it means a lot to not only me fighting for this issue, but to the residents of Boynton Beach, where we are still one of the most affordable cities in this county, one of the richest counties in this city, in the country. And so it's important to enact policies like this to help make sure people from all over the world, anywhere, who want to call Boynton Beach home, they can still afford to live here. So thank you all. Thank you so very much for doing this, and I look forward to passing again during second reading.
All right. And I think also we need to explain the different, different definitions of affordable, workforce, and subsidized. Because affordable and workforce or subsidized, the fact that we are less expensive than Boca and Delray is not, you know, it means that we're affordable, but it doesn't mean that we're subsidized.
Correct.
So, you know, we have to really explain the different definitions. What are the, the deed restrictions with this workforce housing so that this board, who aren't necessarily real estate professionals, can get the better understanding of what we're doing? Because as mentioned, Commissioner McCray thought workforce housing is what we're currently building, which it is not. We have not built any workforce housing. Yes?
Not to belabor the, the conversation. I know we've extended this for a very long time. But I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Mayor, that we do need to do a campaign around education and making sure we explain the different, the differences between these three, these words of workforce, affordable, and, and subsidized. And then sometimes when people hear affordable, they have a stigma with that word and assume that it means something negative, or assumes that they, it means that we're going to bring Section 8 housing, or like even as if Section 8 housing itself is bad. There, there's, there's all types of housing and all types of people of all different walks of life live in them, and it's a matter of education and also teaching acceptance around that. So that's something I'd love to work with our marketing staff on to help commu, to brand and rebrand these words and, and make sure the, the public fully understands what they mean in the efforts that we try to make to continue to house everyone in our, in our city.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes. Moving on to the City Managerial Support Announcement concerning the implementation of bids and tenders contract management and e-bidding software by Eric Marmar, Senior Buyer.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Eric Marmar. I'm the Senior Buyer for the city. I'm here to discuss something very exciting that we're doing in finance. We are implementing bids and tenders, which is our e-procurement platform. And like it says below, we're taking government procurement into the digital age. So what is e-procurement? E-procurement, this is intended to result, the intended result of this is improved ability to manage the entire process through one centralized solution. We're going to be able to post bid opportunities.
Slow down. You need to keep your volume up. Sorry? Keep your volume up.
All right. We're going to be able to post bid opportunities electronically, contracts, insurance, and part of the insurance is a cross-department efficiency. Right now, HR needs to track down COI. Then they're going to be able to submit certificates of insurance directly through this system. We'll be able to do RFP evaluations. There's great reporting. And we're also creating a paperless process that is aligned with our climate action plan while also providing transparency, excuse me, transparency and accessibility. So why, sorry? Why are we doing this? So the city policy states that purchases over the established threshold must be put through the formalized bidding process. The software solution improves upon that process and makes it more efficient for staff, vendors, and the city as a whole. So the e-bidding system has four main components of service. That's the e-bidding portal, bid evaluation, contract management, and vendor performance. So the first one is e-bidding portal. It's a web-hosted system and provides management of the bid posting process from start to finish. And the e-bidding portal provides public access to all bids, addenda, and all other associated documents. The next module is the bid evaluation module. Staff no longer will have to sit through and sift through 300-page documents to pull printed info out of them. Will not be able to put in one generalized report. No longer vendors have to mail bids to the city or bring them to us. They're going to be able to submit them directly online. And this is a web-hosted system that provides management of the bid posting process from start to finish. The e-bidding portal provides public access to all bids, like I said before. This is the contract management module. We're kind of on the forefront right now of all cities. We're going to integrate our ERP system with bids and tenders, and we're doing that so we can track the spending per contract to make sure that we're always in line with what the City Commission approves. This has the ability to manage contracts in a central location for the entire organization and provides a single location for staff to view all active and historical contract details. We'll also be able to run single department reports and for the entire organization. And then there's the vendor performance management module, and this allows for an automated process to capture the vendor's performance evaluation forms and tracks vendor performance incident forms issued throughout the term of the contract. And this is very important for us because say we have a problem with our contract and a vendor might not be performing up to the standards that we're asking for in terms of the goods and services that are being provided, this allows us to track and make sure that they're providing what we ask for. If they're not, allows us to take the necessary actions. So what are some of the other resulting benefits? Obviously, there's going to be reduced costs through these process efficiencies, the ability to create real-time reports. There's a reduced risk exposure to litigation. No longer will we be questioning whether we received a complete bid. The system actually pulls all the printed information, and if they didn't fill it all out, it won't be able to be submitted. There'll be improved customer service for vendor supplier community. I also want to just touch on this for a second. Because this is such a robust system, this takes some of the administrative overhead that we have and will allow us to provide better customer service for our internal clients. So the timeline for this is, we've already, well, we already started training on September 30th, and January 6, we are going to have our first solicitation posted. And it's going to be a phase in implementation schedule of what I've just mentioned and hopefully be done by March 2020. Does anyone have any questions?
I have questions.
Yes. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. In regards to this process, I know there's a lot of things that we have coming before the city, and we said that we have this employee to serve on this committee, this, this, and this. But let's do away with those employees looking over the evaluation of certain things.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm confused by the question. You're saying will employees not be on evaluation committees?
We'll continue with evaluation committees. As far as, as far as the, so it won't eliminate any position or eliminate the need.
That's what I need to know because see, like we have with the toy companies that came, I could, and then I'm just saying it was brought to us and said that these employees, this group looked over these and brought it back to us to make sure that they was following the guidelines. And my take is that I want to make sure that somebody else besides the machine looks over and make sure that things are going the proper way.
Yeah. So this system is not taken away from that. We're still going to have evaluation committees. This just makes it easier for evaluation committees to evaluate the data. It pulls it, it eliminates human error, and it just makes the whole process more efficient.
Organizes all the information mode.
And that's what I need to hear. The evaluation committee will be still used because you said it'll do away with administrative staff. And I'm like, Sam, well, are we getting rid of any employees then?
No.
Okay. I'm just making sure, you know, it sounds like you up there grinning, but I'm making sure that I'm doing the right thing for people that got jobs, okay?
All right. Thank you, Eric. So no, I'm very excited for this because it's sometimes we would see that someone who may have been the best, they forgot something, one of the forms that they were required to have, and so we couldn't accept their bid because they didn't realize, because they may have sent it through the mail. And, you know, then it's, you know, do they FedEx it overnight because they know they have 5:00 p.m. deadline? And what happens if it comes at 5:05? We have to reject it. And so there's a lot of things that having the electronic submission, you know, 4:59 is still good and 5:01 isn't. One of my other questions is, is that how do we reach out to our Boynton Beach community who may become vendors of our new system? Because it is going to be easier for them to bid on some of our contracts. Can we, you know, ask our Economic Development and Strategy Team have like a little course of how to use, if you're a vendor, and who, which types of vendors? Because we have the, the BTRs of all the businesses and reach out to them. And so after the implementation in March, you know, sometime, you know, I guess between March and June, to see if we can't have some sort of event where we reach out to our business community to let them know of the new bidding process and so that we're building wealth in our community.
We're more than happy to show any vendor how to use the system. And just to touch on one other thing, we are looking at being able to run reports back to see, once we start using the software, to capture data regarding local vendors and who we've awarded contracts to. We'll be able to pull that data in a report.
And so we'll be able to track the money that the city spends as well?
Correct. So that's, that's what I was talking about, where we're at the forefront. We're actually one of the first agencies to integrate the software with our own internal software, the ERP system. So right now, like, if we award a bid and the commission approves a certain amount, we will put that amount into the software. It'll pull from our financial system when we spend on that contract to make sure that it never goes over that limit and we know how much we're spending.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. And this was Eric's first time ever speaking before the City Commission, so how did he do?
Did very well.
He did well.
He did okay, thank you.
And you survived, Eric.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
That's my first time actually meeting Eric.
Trying to get staff before you more often.
I was wondering who that guy was in the front seat. Nice to meet you, Eric.
All right. We got proposed resolution number 19-169, Accept Land Donation from Catherine M. Speth Trust.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Last meeting, we discussed possibly changing the time to an earlier time. I know that our vice mayor asked for 5:30, however, you know, my wife gets off of work at 5:00, and I like to spend a little bit of time with her before I come to these meetings, and I know that some people, a lot of people get off of work at 5:00, and so rather than them having to choose between going home and then coming to the meeting, they can spend the 5, 10, 15 minutes, get ready, and come to the meeting, and so I would like to suggest 6:00.
I'm going to make a suggestion, since the vice mayor's not here, let's wait until he come back. I'm just saying to make a complete discussion.
No, the reason why.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
To make a complete discussion of this, my whole take is that, you know, with the election coming up in March, you know, and it wouldn't be fair whoever's coming on to take our places, or whoever's place might be up here, I think this should be done after that election is held. This is my opinion.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the reason why it is on and not in January is because we're making the calendars for next year, and so we do not want to change it after all of the calendars are printed. And, yes, so Commissioner Penserga, then Romulus.
I just want to state my opinion on this. You know, the idea here is to make enough of a change that there is a significant impact in time saved here. So, instead of having an 11:00 meeting, it lasts until 10:00 at night instead of 11:00. I totally understand, and I sympathize for the arguments that you made, Mayor. I think those are credible points, but at the same time, I think a 30-minute change isn't much of a change, so I do want to stick to 5:30. Let's give it an hour of a difference, and if it becomes a problem for people, we'll know, we'll hear from them, and we can revisit the topic again, but I think 30 minutes is not enough of a change.
Commissioner Romulus?
I am also fine with the 5:30 start time.
All right. So, may I have a motion to approve the 2020 start time for city commission meetings, and can we do it for the CRA as well, because we're the governing body?
That would be fine.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Passes three to one. Next, we have legal, Proposed Resolution Number 19-170, Established by Resolution to District Energy System Rates, Fees, and Charges for Chilled Water Service. What is the rate?
Is that me?
The rates are found in the ordinance. There's multiple rates. Chill water is very difficult to explain the rates, because there's five different parts of it. But what we did is.
Explain, explain one, and how much does it cost?
Okay, so chill water is measured by BTU, energy units. The way that's measured is the temperature of the water going in and the temperature difference of the temperature of the water coming out. There's a base rate, just like there is in water and sewer, so the base rate in chilled water is the amount that the owner of the building says they want. So, if they say they want, they need 100 tons, they will pay for 100 tons as a base rate. Whatever they use over that, then they'll, then they pay a consumption fee on that. If they use under that, they still pay the 100 tons, so it's a minimum. Then there's a part of the rate that's a differential, so if we send them the water at 42 degrees, and they send it back at 46 degrees, you're okay. If you send it water out at 42, and they send it back at 49 degrees, they're going to pay a differential between 48 degrees and 49 degrees, because they're using more energy than they're paying for in the base rate. I told you it's complicated.
I know.
And there's a whole bunch of other pieces of that that go in. What we did to calculate these rates, which is most important, is we looked at what it would cost, we had to do some assumptions, but we looked at what it would cost for a very cheap system that you did yourself in your own building, a medium-priced system that you would do in your building, and then a Cadillac system you would do in your building. And we said where, and we wanted to make sure that the rates we charged them would be less than what they would pay for their own system. We did not pick the cheapest, but we picked somewhere in that, you know, first third price of systems. So, what we're saying is, what we've calculated is these rates are going to be less expensive to the individuals that are going to be using it than what they would pay if they were doing it themselves. That includes the city, because we're going to be paying the bill, and we're going to be paying less than if we tried to do it ourselves with our own units. I wish I could explain the rates better, but that's basically the way the rates charge. So, what the numbers are.
Thank you.
That's what you want to know?
Yes.
So, an example, which is in the thing, and I'll just give you, the example is, if they need 20 tons per hour, the contractor would have a capacity charge of $600 a month, and if they used an average of 21 tons per hour, or one ton above, that capacity charge would be 630. So, it would go up based on what their minimum is. Consumption rate, if they use the 20 tons, times the 720 hours, 30 days a month, times the 24 cents per ton hour, would be an additional $3,456. And then there's a return temperature charge, which is 12 and 1/2% of that differential in the Fahrenheit temperature. And then there's a supply temperature differential, there's an interconnection charge, so when they connect, they pay, it's a connection charge, just like in water.
Colin, I want to interrupt you, so.
So, these are all, this is how calculates the rate.
Okay, and so, we're the first customer?
The first customer is going to be the cultural center, yes. So, it is.
So, the city of Boynton Beach is going to be the first customer, and so we're no, if we're overcharging ourselves?
Yes.
Before we reach out to the private market?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We have reached out to our potential customers.
Yes.
And they've looked at these, and they find they're very, very fair. They're very happy with what we're doing.
You just answered my question. All right. Thank you. Commissioner McCray, then Commissioner Romulus.
Thank you. Colin, you kept saying that we're a cheap system. Can we just make sure that we can use a version that is more economical? I'm just saying, I don't like that word, cheap, when I'm discussing, you know, spinning steady money.
Yeah, we did not pick the cheap system. We're using a system that's more economical.
Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Romulus?
Okay, so my question was, for some of those surrounding single-family homes, what would they have to do to kind of get online to this system?
So, it would not work for a single-family home. It would not be cost-effective for single-family homes. It's only really cost-effective for large buildings, where you have at least 40 to 50 tons of AC need in the building. A typical house is about four tons, so that tells you the kind of the difference.
Like your air conditioning units.
Like your air conditioning unit is about four tons. Our smallest customer is the cultural center, is the smallest customer, actually, no, the smallest customer is fire station number one, which is about 60 tons. Any smaller than that, it really does not become cost-effective, but take example, the private development on the south, that's about 700 tons for that. It's very economical for them. That's why they're very happy with these rates. And these rates also, then, we've set them so they'll pay for the utility, they pay for all the cost, and they also provide a return back to the utility, like we had presented previously.
And there's a $25,000 connection charge I saw.
Yeah, that pays for the meters, because the meters for these are not just a simple water meter, they're very complicated meters with sensors and computers, and there's a lot of things that go in. The chill water's a little bit more, that's why each, actually, and each individual customer will have their own contract with these rates in it, because there's a lot of other things that the customer has to do within their system to make sure the system works for everybody.
Okay.
So, that's why these systems are really for the big customers.
Commissioner Penserga?
So, Colin, it sounds like the bottom line is that if you, if you're a business and you own a large building, you are saving money.
Yes. You will be saving money.
My next question is, where do we stand in comparison to other similar plants?
So, there's not very many of these systems in the state. There's OUC Orlando, Utility Commission has plants, JEA, Jacksonville Electric Authority, or JEA has plants, City of Gainesville does it with the school. We've looked at all of those. We're providing ones right in line with what they're providing, at the rates they're providing. And the reason is, is that everybody, it costs about the same to run those, these types of utilities. So, we're right in line with that, actually, a little bit lower, but we're also a little bit newer, so we're going to be a little bit lower, so.
My other question is on the system, is that if somebody wants air conditioning and their neighbor wants heat, is that possible?
So, this system is being designed for chilled water. There is a waste heat component, but we're not using it at this time. In the future, if we decide to, we could. In South Florida, the waste heat is not that big. It's not a very economical way of gaining your heat. It'll actually be more expensive to get your heat off of this. We're looking at using the waste heat to generate power instead.
So, if someone in the private community wants to have heat, they would have to have a separate?
Right. So, the units that are being put in have a separate heat strip in it for the heating, the one or two days a year that's needed. Maybe four or five for some of y'all, but.
All right.
The one or two for most people.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, is that then connected through FPNL? I'm confused.
So, yeah, electric heat strip would just be on the power meter, on the meter for the, for the unit, right.
So, they would have a bill coming from FPL, too?
Right. And, and we've looked at our building, our city hall building, that's a good example, because that's a very large building. We've looked at our city building, and we do not believe we'll ever have to have any heat, because there's enough differential in the water that we can actually heat the building with the air conditioning. You can set it at 80, and you can actually keep the temperature at 80. So, if we have a freeze in South Florida and West Palm Beach, yes, people will have to turn on an electric heater strip, and it's in the unit itself, it's not a separate system, it's within the air handler that you're using it. And yes, they'll have to learn, use a little bit of electricity then, but the, when, that happens so rarely, it's not, you can't even calculate it into the value of the system.
The last time it's, it was 40 years ago.
It's, it doesn't happen very often down here, so.
Okay. And it's on their regular electric bill, right?
Right. It would be on their regular electric bill.
Power, you know, for, in their file, so it'll just.
All right.
Okay. Yeah.
Did I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Proposed Ordinance Number 19-043, Second Reading. Shawna?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the abandonment of an FPL easement within the Ocean Breeze East Development, located at 100 Northeast 7th Avenue. Applicant is Louis Suesi, Ocean Breeze East Apartments LLC, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing for an effective date.
So moved.
Second for discussion, our comment, if you want to.
Yes.
My comment is that I'm just saying, if you have not been by Ocean Breeze East to see this, it is fantastic now. The trees are gone, it's looking like, you know, you all are really doing something, and we're proud over there. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion, any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, do we, I got a motion in a second?
Mm-hmm.